We will move on to item six point four, it's our nine thirty timed item, consideration of presentation by Sonoma Clean Power Chief Executive Officer Jeff Cyphers on a geothermal opportunity zone and invitation to Lake County to join. And let's see, Carol, would you like to go ahead and start it out?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Matthew Rothstein has been working with representatives of Sonoma Clean Power and he'll introduce this item.
Good morning, Board. As you're aware, in 2019 and 2020, Sonoma Clean Power generously conducted a study evaluating the feasibility of Lake County implementing community choice aggregation and being served by Sonoma Clean Power specifically. This study was conducted at no cost to the county. While SCP serving Lake County was not determined cost effective at that time, they've been invaluable partners since. Most recently, SCP submitted letters of support for multiple county grant applications. We are very grateful for SCP's collaboration and partnership and the SCP Board's support of Lake County's energy resiliency and economic development priorities. Over the next several years, multiple large scale energy projects will be decommissioned in California, including the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Plant. As a result, baseload renewable resources, projects with more constant reliable production than can be provided by more weather dependent solar or wind, for example, are expected to be of increasing import in the state's energy portfolio. Lake County has long been home to Calpines, the Geyser's geothermal facility, a key baseload resource. And portions of our county are rich in the natural attributes that are conducive to geothermal production. New closed loop geothermal technologies can facilitate energy production with less water usage. Opportunity therefore exists to encourage job creation and possibly even generate county revenue by promoting new geothermal development. We're very excited that Jeff Cyphers and Ryan Tracy of Sonoma Clean Power are here today to discuss creation of a geothermal opportunity zone. Jeff and Ryan, welcome.
Thank you. So I'm Jeff Cyphers, Ryan Tracy, wave your hand. That's Ryan Tracy. Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for inviting us here. We are, just for the members of the public who don't know, Sonoma Clean Power is a public electricity provider that generates the electricity for Sonoma and Mendocino Counties today. And our customers still share the power lines of PG&E to distribute that energy, just for background. And as Mr. Rothstein alluded, even though we are waiting to reassess the cost effectiveness of providing service to Lake County, we've been closely engaged and I think that that conversation all along has been really good because we do share an awful lot of similar challenges such as fires and water and other issues. And we obviously share the Geyser's complex with Sonoma and Mendocino as well. And so really, this conversation about the geothermal opportunity zone extended out of the fact that the the state regulators at the CPUC have recently called for more than doubling the amount of geothermal energy that the state produces in a very short schedule, actually, by the time that the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant retires in 2025. And that's a very aggressive timetable, and that's one thing that's driving our interest in geothermal. But there is also a long game that we're looking at, and that is that developing geothermal in ways that are much more water efficient than traditional geothermal power is going to be, we think, increasingly important in the Western United States. And also, you know, looking at technologies that use much less land than traditional geothermal, so that you don't have the long flow tubes and other things that are needed for the Geyser's type of power generation. And so last month, our Board of Directors asked me and Ryan to extend an invitation to Lake County to join an effort that we're spearheading to increase California's use of geothermal power. And so that's our objective. And further kind of reinforcing the need for twenty-four seven clean power is the fact that California is not just closing its last nuclear power plant, but it's also phasing out the use of natural gas power. And in fact, the state has a law, Senate Bill one hundred that requires no gas plants to operate in the year twenty forty-six. That is a, it it sounds far away, but our state relies very heavily on natural gas power today. And so gearing up for that long game and developing technologies like offshore wind and geothermal power are going to be part of the solution for making that possible. And so part of what will also make it possible are creative energy storage solutions like the Flashes Grant that that you, you know, are pursuing as well with the closed loop tanks of water. And so I wanted to, let me see if I can share my screen. Is that possible? You seeing that thumbs up?
Yes, we see it.
Okay, super. So I wanted to to talk about what we're trying to form, and and this would be across Sonoma, Mendocino and Lake Counties, we hope, should those counties decide to participate. And it's really to form a partnership where our staff share some time to support research into potential project locations. We explore, you know, different appetites and interest for consuming the power. The default on that would be that Sonoma Clean Power buys the energy output initially of projects, but that could be expanded to include the County of Lake, if there's an opportunity to serve customers yourselves or through our program. And also the opportunity to invite in other community choice aggregation or CCA type power providers around California if there's more production than we could buy on our own. And then I mentioned the use of significantly lower water, and I'll show you a slide about how that would work. But also, as as local governments, we're very interested in not only sustaining the jobs and revenues and taxes from existing geothermal production, which is going to be important because the Geyser's complex does have a very slowly declining output. And so finding ways to boost that without needing new water is going to be important, we think. But also to add to it, I think, I think you probably know that Lake County is the Saudi Arabia of geothermal power. And if you don't, I tout it from the rooftops because you have a resource that is quite special and and I think it's not necessarily been fully utilized. And I think the main constraint has been water in the past and transmission capacity. So we also have an interest in attracting money. The federal government, even though they're tied up in knots around infrastructure money, we do believe that both the federal government and the state of California are going to identify geothermal energy and other baseload clean renewable power sources as being really critical to develop in the near term. So as a map of of the potential resource, the little triangles represent the existing developed geothermal energy. And obviously, a lot of that, you know, hottest zone of of potential resource is actually in the lake itself. And so you wouldn't have buildings constructed out there. But I'll show you why some of that resource might be developable. And and Lake County could be a potential beneficiary of this. So the the two technologies that are highlighted here on the left, it's showing a little sketch of a building at the surface of the earth that has a turbine where steam is flowing up out of the ground. And that steam is expanding and running the turbine. And the again, in the picture on the left, but the right hand side of it, there is a separate well that is injecting water into the ground. And the way that works at the Geyser's today is the rock is very porous. So you're injecting treated wastewater and it's flowing around the hot rock and it turns into steam and comes up through a different tube. So there's a lot of pipes at the surface of the earth, and that creates a pretty large footprint that some people have some concerns about further development of that type of geothermal. On the right is one example of a few new kinds of technologies that have been in use in limited places around the earth. And we're pretty excited about it because it comes out of industries that are starting to lose jobs, like the natural gas and and oil industries in terms of the directional drilling technologies, where you can have a fairly small footprint at the surface of the earth where your your water flowing down into the ground is very close to where you're collecting steam above the ground. And in fact, you can have it at the same facility and then steer the bore to go to the hot rock area. The other part in that binary technology on the right is it's closed loop. So you're actually using far less water to make up for any losses than you are in the in the existing technology. And we think the potential for water conservation could be really critical. So this is just a short presentation, mostly to gauge interest and appetite and to see if if the board has, wants to learn more, wants to get into some of the details of kind of what we're talking about with the geozone. And really to consider passing a resolution joining and doing that would start a discussion about how and where to encourage geothermal production. It would not entail any expectation of funds from Lake County and Sonoma Clean Power would propose to lead the and staff the effort, but it would involve some of your time. So so your staff, we'd expect would help us research potential sites, help us bring updates to this board and generally to stay engaged. And with that, Matthew, maybe we could see if there's questions on this and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Cyphers. Matthew, do you have anything else?
I don't have anything further to add at this time, but we'll look forward to your Board's questions and questions or comments from the public.
Excellent. Supervisor Piscia.
Yeah, I appreciate this conversation and I think we're interested in some exploration, but are are you looking to expand out of the Geyser Complex in other parts of the county?
We are, and with very small footprint technology. So the idea is instead of having relatively massive buildings with giant concrete pads and and lots of tubes, we're looking at trying to use technology that each individual plant might be relatively small in terms of its output, but also small in terms of its footprint as well. So we're considering opportunities to site projects on public land, private land, potentially tribal properties if the tribes wish to own these assets and sell to us. And so I think there could be a number of different kinds of places to place it.
So it would all be new infrastructure?
There are probably some limited places where we could reuse existing infrastructure within the Geyser's complex and certainly in Lake County, where geothermal projects were either developed and abandoned or have become decommissioned. And so that is also on the on the table. But really, the locations of this would be driven by by you and the public in the in the sort of overlap of where the potential is and where the public wishes to see this kind of development. So we definitely, as fellow public agencies, do not want to impose projects in places where you do not want them. So I would hope that's a conversation that we can have just right out in the open here.
Yeah. And so I see on the diagram, the boring kind of goes laterally under the ground. And so I know this is very early in the conversation, but would that increase earthquakes throughout our communities?
The the good news is this newer technology, because it's it's capturing the steam and condensing it and re-injecting it into the ground, it actually produces much less seismic activity than the classic essentially injecting cold water into the ground. So this water is actually warmer when it goes into the ground. And and it's the injection of cold water against hot rock that causes earthquakes. So that's something where I don't have enough detail to characterize like how much less that is, and that would be part of what we want to study and research. But but I'm encouraged that that could be one of the problems that we're helping solve.
And I know geothermal is often touted as a very clean energy source and it, there is there are byproducts and it it's not as clean as maybe some people think if you've ever worked on a power plant like I have. And so I'm just wondering if we're, like, what kind of waste you would see throughout our communities with these smaller little plants?
The the other good news about, so there's there's bad news too, which I'll share after sharing the good news about closed loop. But the other good news to your point about using closed loop and binary type systems is that you're not getting the leakage of hydrogen sulfide gas and and carbon dioxide or methane from essentially an open well that's open to the atmosphere. Because that, it should any come out, it's condensed and reinjected into the ground. And so from a, from an air quality and a human health standpoint, we think there's some really significant advantages. I I want to be full disclosure, the downside is these units are slightly less efficient, or at least some of the early ones have been slightly less efficient at producing a megawatt of power out of a certain unit of heat. And so that would be something we also want to explore is if there are ways to improve the efficiency, the energy efficiency conversion of these new systems.
And there are some solids too after condensation.
Yes. Yeah. And Ryan, I don't know if you can speak to that.
Yeah, it also from drilling, if if there's new, drilling new well bores. But those those are all things that we want to keep in scope when we're engaging developers and looking at their plans to mitigate those types of issues.
Okay, well, I really appreciate this conversation. I think it's exciting. But I do have a lot of experience in this field, so you know, there is a a lot that we'll still need to talk about in the future. But thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions from members of the board?
Yeah. Just a question on, you know, obviously, like you said, new technology and those types of things. I've never worked in geothermal fields, so Jessica, you obviously have an upper hand on that, but obviously been up there and understand exactly what we have in our backyard here in Lake County with with our geothermal partners that that are here. When it talks about production or minimal external, the lowering of the water usage. Do you guys have an idea or it's just, you know, you think it does, or is there a percentage of less water usage on these binary plants than the current geothermal fields that we have in Lake County?
Ryan, do you have something specific on that or?
I mean, theoretically, some of these technologies are 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 close to operating without any net water input. You know, I think there's there's some water to to feed the system initially to fill it up, but much, much lower. And we can certainly get better numbers on that, but drastically lower water input than what we've seen.
I I also think there probably in most cases, if we're near any sort of porous rock, there will be some net input into the ground, some some essentially water that gets diffused out into the ground. But but I think it is exciting to see this this potential significant decrease. And and we're certainly aiming to maximize that because it's not just Lake County, it's Sonoma's and Mendocino both dealt with some pretty severe water crises. And even the flows to the existing Geyser's have been questioned in public meetings. And so we we definitely want to get ahead of any potential conversation about, you know, how that water gets used and make sure we can use it very efficiently.
The other comment, I'd be on the same, you know, that we are looking at all opportunities for the long term sustainability of our, you know, electrical grid and, you know, the opportunity we can provide the folks here and ultimately creating jobs is a a long term opportunity that we always want to be looking at. So a lot more education, interested in in at least hearing more. Don't know if we're prepared to move forward with the resolution of joining anything yet because still need to be educated a lot more on what the opportunities may be here in Lake County. So appreciate the presentation. And Matthew, thank you very much because I know we've been having many conversations on how we move along with different, you know, opportunities here in Lake County. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
To Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Energy is definitely a huge topic of interest for everybody, especially with PSPS and the soaring prices. I I have a couple of concerns that I want to share. One is you showed us the map of where the geothermal footprint is and pretty much it's Lake County as as you suggested, though I don't know if I'm happy with the analogy that we are the Saudi Arabia of geothermal. It represents the fact that this is where the base is for the area. And my concern is, and and I guess I'm using history to kind of be concerned about something is we have Calpine, we have the geothermal, but do we really benefit other than jobs on a very personal level with energy coming back into Lake County? No, we don't. We don't see a reduction in costs. Yes, we do see some revenue coming into the county, but on a personal level in our households, in our community, there there's not a huge benefit other than the jobs. I'm hopeful, because you've named Sonoma County and Mendocino County, that this will not just be a job creation and then energy leaving our community to be able to energize other communities and that we actually benefit on a very personal level. I know those have been conversations that I had when I joined Supervisor Crandall to talk about the wind project over between Colusa County and Lake County. What do we actually benefit from it rather than just providing some clean energy where then PG&E can continue to offer us us the same rates that they're offering? I'm also concerned about the rate increases, which looks like CCA, it takes a higher increase based on PG&E's request at CPUC. And I think it's tough because I know you utilize their power line infrastructure, even though you create your own energy. And it's tough for you to be able to separate away from PG&E's rate increases where they can kind of tell you what your rates will be and have been doing so over the course of the last five years because you offered a great rate and that rate is slowly getting closer and closer to the exact rate of PG&E. And so those are some of my concerns. I want to make sure that we benefit. I want to make sure that it's going. I love the comments brought up by Supervisor Piscia. We want to make sure that our environment is not changed for the worst just to create energy. There's other technologies out there that are moving forward, such as power cells and things like that. And and who knows where we will be ten years from now because the technology is moving so fast. And I anticipate that if this project does move forward, that it will take probably at least ten years or around then to be able to fully develop, fully study and things like that. The other concern was you mentioned Sonoma and Mendocino County, and it sounded like they're not on board at this moment in time. Is this your first presentation? Have you presented to them and they haven't approved yet to be on board with this? I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification on that.
Yeah, they're they're slower to agendize. But yes, we have agendas, dates for Sonoma and Mendocino as well. And and our board consists of members of those two counties as well. So our our board is made up of each of the cities that we serve and the two counties. So they've already heard about this, but we're going in and doing a briefing to Mendocino later this month and to Sonoma in December.
So you just said something that triggered something. I would anticipate that if we say yes, that there would be a board opening seat so that Lake County could become a part of your board.
That's an interesting idea. I I would need to obviously ask my board for that because they control that. But that's an intriguing idea. And you've also thrown down some excellent challenges about what are the individual benefits in Lake County. And I've taken a lot of notes. I also think we could use this as an opportunity to explore eventual service to Lake County using resources that we might finance, but then serve load in Lake County. And all those things sound good to me. The seat on the board wouldn't be allowed by our existing governing documents, so they would have to be modified. So that might take some time. And one thought to address another concern is if if any sort of declaration or resolution could be drafted in a manner that made no commitment whatsoever to development, but just to exploring this opportunity, that may be helpful in us going to the federal government to see if money could be available to to aid in this effort while there's a longer, much more detailed conversation as well. And so it's something to consider as we go forward to to not bind in any way the project development, but to allow us to essentially call and put our hand out and say to Mike Thompson and others, you know, can you help?
Right. And I I'm absolutely on board with the idea of exploring this with no further commitment. I know that you're going to have to go through CEQA, most likely you'll have to go through NEPA if you get some federal grants out of that. And those are the most important documents to really understand what the impacts will be. And so I'm okay with the resolution of exploring. I don't believe that's what's in front of us at this moment in time. So if it needs to come back with a clarification on the resolution, I'm happy to move that forward because exploring ideas is what we need to be doing to make sure that we're well positioned in the future rather than waiting for the right thing to come to us.
Super. That sounds good.
Thank you.
And we'd also like you to explore the idea of getting Lake County a seat on the board.
Yes, I will certainly ask that question. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments from the board? All right, we'll go ahead and open it up for public input. I don't see anybody moving up, but I do see a hand up. And Sally Peterson, if you can unmute and give her three minutes.
Oh, yes. Hi. I really appreciate the questions from the Board of Supervisors today about this. And I'm curious to ask if there are any, it sounds like this is brand new technology, but is there any place that this technology is is working now that we can look at as an example?
I take that. And this is, this is actually one of the reasons that really there's a catalyst for creating this this zone is we're seeing technology development help happen a lot elsewhere in the world and elsewhere in the country. A lot of new geothermal development is happening in Nevada. A lot of it's happening in Europe, including there's 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 many of these binary operating plants that are currently in operation. The subsurface closed loop, that that's more of its infancy, but what we're really looking at with this opportunity is is to say, hey, we actually have a a really good resource in our backyard and look at different issues that we can attack, you know, engaging the community and engaging different stakeholders to make developers think of Lake County as an option to start developing and evolving these technologies.
Thank you for that. Okay, next we have Betsy Connel. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Cyphers, I wonder if you could please identify those elected officials from Sonoma and Mendocino Counties that are on your board, please?
So Chair Supervisor Linda Hopkins is on our board currently and and then Dan Jirdy from Mendocino is on our board as well. And then there are members from each city.
Thank you very much. Is there a way to locate the information about your board online? Is there a website?
Yes, and there's quite a lot of material. If you want to learn more about us, it's sonomacleanpower.org.
Sonoma Clean Power dot.
Thank you very much.
All right, excellent. All right, I don't see anyone else's hands up. With that, I will close public input and bring it back to the board here at the for action or for whatever we decide.
All right, so I really appreciate, again, having this conversation because we, as we move forward, we have to, as Supervisor Sabatier mentioned, we have to figure out our sustainability for our PSPSs and for providing and creating power in our county. And I really like the idea of developing a network of smaller facilities that are less impactful. We're, you know, we've got a biochar project that we're trying to to get done and and maybe several more possibly in the future. And and so this 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 really kind of works with the ideas that we're floating around right now. And I'm excited to have this conversation, but it, we do really have to be at the table if this is going to be mostly in our county. So I just want to make sure that that's very, very clear this today.
All right, thank you for emphasizing that. That is my concern as well. You and Supervisor Sabatier have mentioned some very important issues that I, questions that I had as well, and I'd like to see the same assurances as well. So thank you for for bringing that up. And so I think.
Supervisor Sabatier has his hand up.
Oh, Supervisor Sabatier, sorry, I didn't.
No worries. It's what happens when you stay home. I I would like to see a exploration resolution brought back to us so we can review that. I think that it would be difficult to get a membership on a board prior to an actual idea of a project being done. And so I think that's kind of the And so I think that's kind of the cart before the horse, because exploration without further commitments, I'm very comfortable with. So then we can go ahead and proceed with the idea, okay, if we're going to do this and we're going to commit to this type of project, then let's make sure that we have a table, a seat at the table in order to move forward and have a voice for Lake County. And so if it's possible to do so, and if the rest of the board feels okay with doing that, I would love to see that coming to us in a future agenda.
Yep.
I think it looks like we have a consensus of direction. Do we need to formalize that, Ms. Grant?
No, we're good.
Okay.
Staff understands and will return.
Looks like we have a consensus. Thank you, Matthew. And thank you, Mr. Cypher. And with that, we'll go ahead and close this item.